Here.
Here, Barry, you have the one.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Madre, can you lead us in the pledges? Is it okay?
Good shot.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready?
Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, our invocation is from Pastor Marlo Dowdy from Church of the Living God.
It's an honor to be with you here this evening. I was telling Gil just how lovely it was to see council members interacting and talking with citizens, and they really felt like family. So I just want to just show a blessing upon you and pray for this meeting. So Father, we thank you and praise you. We thank you for a city that is a family, united under you, with your grace that births forth peace. We lift up all leaders from the city to county to state and national level, Lord, that they would hear your voice, they would humble themselves, and to serve your people well by making decisions that honor you. So would you bless the city council meeting this evening as we pray numbers 624? May the Lord bless you and protect you. May the Lord smile on you and be gracious to you. May the Lord show you his favor and give you his peace. We pray all of this in Jesus' mighty name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, does any elected council member have any conflict of interest to report on the agenda today? All right. Okay, next is public comment. First up is Ms. Ginger Jones.
I'm prepared, but elections are over. Okay, I reviewed the STR section of the agenda. STR ordinances need to be finalized and put to bed. I still feel we need to put a moratorium on future STRs and feel that the way it's written, it allows that. It allows for future situations of people passing away and things of that sort. The $250 rate for all, I feel like it's very fair rather than going by bedrooms or bathrooms because they get a higher rent, so you get a higher taxation there. But there definitely needs to be a penalty for those that are neglectful and not turning in the bed on time. I disagree with the number eight, nine, and 10, and especially about inspections. I think that's in people's privacy. And on number 14, the city deals with a lot of paper already, and we'll be adding more to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Ms. Dorset Flores. Marisol.
Hi, it's Megan. Marisol Dorset Flores, 16613, and basically it's just.
I didn't say my address.
Again, I'm against the restrictions, it's law restrictions, and please enforce the laws that are already in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, Mr. Francis, do you have some comments to read?
I do. Zachary Strickland, 16564 Pelican Road. Good evening, city council members, citizens, and legal. I would like to start off with a few questions for legal. One, topic of no new STR permits. The mayor mentioned in the last meeting that legal advised that this, that it's legal for a new ordinance to restrict the ability for new homeowners to acquire an STR permit. I think there's doubt based on case law that those statements are true. Regardless, if we assume that current owners are grandfathered in, can you confirm that they shouldn't then forever have the ability to attain a new STR permit, whether it's temporarily revoked, surrendered for a period of time, or passed to a family member? Example, if operation fee is not paid, would the owner still be allowed to resubmit the appropriate paperwork, pay the registration fee, and gain a new STR permit? Two, my next question is, what if the property is in a trust? Would the trust then be considered the owner and have the ability to forever attain an STR permit? What if the property is not currently in a trust but is put into its trust after the ordinance is passed? Would that process of putting the property in a trust force that property to lose grandfather status and the ability to get an STR permit to the council? I think it's unjust to apply a three-strike rule with such a harsh penalty of a six-month suspension of an STR permit, especially since the violations you're trying to attach to this three-strike rule are governed by other ordinances such as parking, trash, and noise. With what you're proposing, if an STR was to get three trash penalties, they would have their licenses suspended for six months. If this suspension takes place from March to August, that could be equivalent to a $100,000 penalty for some properties and seems too harsh. Those violations should be enforced with the current ordinances and penalties enforced according to what's outlined in those ordinances. I request that you enforce the laws and ordinances that are in place without additionally attaching those to an STR as a strike. I would actually encourage the city to ticket and tow vehicles for residents and renters that violate the ordinance, the streets aren't blocked. What I don't want is a strike for giving the very clear instru- What I don't want is a strike for the way a renter parks or if they drop a white bag on by the can on their way out after being given very unclear instructions and warnings. I pay for a professional service to take my trash out so I stay in compliance, but that's not 100% guaranteed. For example, my neighbor could put a white bag by my can to try and get me three strikes and a six-month suspension. What's really important to me is that strikes get reset back to zero on an annual basis when permits are renewed. Last thing I'd like to say is in regards to the STR permit being suspended for not paying hot tax, I agree that the permit should be suspended until it's paid if it's late 45 to 60 days, but think it should be reinstated immediately once paid. This is the same way utility.
Yes, I have a boss.
Done. Robin Harris, 16529, Anchor Way. I am sure that many in this room believe in the principle of limited government. That, of course, does not mean what we do not pass laws and ordinances when needed, but it does mean that we consider those proposals carefully, ensuring that any additional ordinance directly addresses an unserved need in the community. We passed such an ordinance last year, and while the STR ordinance has only recently begun to be enforced, these numbers reported by Kendall show that it is working. The majority of nuisance homes have fallen into compliance or no longer being rented. Given the recent and obvious success of the ordinance, I do not understand the need for several of these new items, many of which address no additional issue and only create a headache for owners in the city alike. The proposed requirement for quarterly financial reporting from short-term rental owners is a prime example of an unnecessary provision. I do not know of any other municipality that both collects the taxes from the booking platforms and requires individuals to submit quarterly reports. It's just unnecessary. With platforms like VRBO and Airbnb already automating the collection and remittance of taxes, this requirement creates redundant work for both owners and the city without addressing any known issue. Additionally, the city already has a mechanism in place to request financials from an owner if further investigation is warranted. This is just one example of unnecessary and onerous provision. For each item proposed, I urge a council member to consider: One, does this policy address a clearly identified problem that is not already covered by existing law? Two, does it add unnecessary complexity or burden for owners or the city? Three, does it align with the principle that the government that governs best governs least? I would think many of you agree with this principle. Let's not become a city of needless bureaucracy and onerous provisions. Anna Howard, 4423 Pelican Road. After watching the October 24th council meeting, I am very worried as to the amount of power our elected officials are taking up on themselves. Starting at hour 2.22 on the video, it is obvious that some council members have already made up their minds and are willing to spend tax dollars on possible litigation instead of conducting more research and speaking with more property owners. Are there issues with STRs? Yes. Are some of these issues already addressed with the current ordinances or laws? Yes. It's just more of enforcing the current laws and ordinances. The council voting to not only restrict the number of STRs, but voting on any new purchased properties not being able to be used as the STRs is an unconstitutional overreach to property owners. If this ordinance is passed, you will have devalued my property. The buyer's pool for a new sales will be limited. Limited buyers means I won't be able to get the money, the most money, for my property. A future part-timer that purchases my property would not be able to rent it and help with the expenses as many already do. This needs to be researched more and not a one-size-fits-all mentality. On another note, Kendall, thank you for having Michelle Leslie with the GLO come in with her presentation. Very informative, thank you for your time. Monica Allen, 4606 Jamaica Cove Road. First, against ban. When I sell, or anyone else for that matter, the new owners have a constitutional right to rent-lease their property. That was the understanding we had when we purchased eight years ago. The ban does nothing but, one, continue to devalue our already decreased home values, and realtors are educating their clients not to buy in JB due to the political climate the council has created. And, two, to pacify a small group of very vocal anti-STR homeowners. Anyone who purchased in JB in the last 20 years knew this community was a vacation destination. Renovation suspension. What penalties do non-STR owners face when they accumulate an abundance of citations for violating ordinances? Wording should be convicted citations. Where is the data to support the vast amount of resources being used to continue to push this issue? So far, I've not seen or heard any actual data from city or police staff that STRs are indeed the problem. How many of the 46 calls for service were to STR-occupied properties? How many were non-STRs? The state of Texas states that a governing entity must provide proof that a specific demographic is violating laws, ordinances, in order to require certain rules for certain groups. At the town hall, it was very apparent the vast majority of people who were there did not support an entire ban moratorium. I do support some regulation of STRs, but what has been discussed is government overreach, a money grab, and doesn't resolve the problems. Perhaps reevaluating the application process for new applicants, perhaps a class or a specific training for owners and property managers. Lastly, the application and compliance deadline was more than nine months ago. There should be data presented with results of the new ordinances and what specifically is being done to the 17 properties still not in compliance. Andrea Spearing, 16617 JB Road. Thank you for your time, which we strive as a community to treat all JB property owners equally and respectfully. With respect to the combining of all STR ordinances into a single ordinance, the agenda refers to ordinance 2023-1. This is an ordinance about city curfews. It should be listed as 2023-11. This is the first STR ordinance with errors corrected and modifications made with the following ordinances: 2023-11 door signage, 2023-14 exterior signage, 2023-15 adds onsite inspection if a safety complaint is made, 2023-26 amends occupancy to 2B plus 4, 2024-09 amends to include platform hosting, posting, and hot payment. I believe any concerted ordinance combining all current STR ordinances should not be a simple combining, but should undergo a rigorous rewrite and edit to avoid duplication and additional ordinances to correct small but detrimental oversights as happened with ordinance 2023-11. I would be happy to be part of any committee to work on this. Putting a cap on STRs is not fair to the different property owners in JB. Is there a distinction in STR complaints in certain areas of the city? Beachfront versus landlocked versus canal versus bayfront? Why cap STRs when complaints are limited to certain existing STRs in certain neighborhoods within JB? Maybe someone isn't renting out their home now, but their circumstances change and they would need to do so. Maybe a home has always been in an STR but is then sold. Maybe someone's employment transfers and they cannot use their home as frequently as they do now and wish to rent. As I and others brought up at the last council meeting, stop adding additional hoops for STRs to jump through. Let the ordinances on file have time to do their job. The city has been a large, has seen a large increase in STR registrations. Go after the STR still not in compliance. Apply all city ordinances, noise, light, parking, trash, GCAD space versus existing space, equally to all homes in JB, whether STR, part-time, or full-time. Distinctions cannot be made to selectively enforce codes and laws to only one subset of the community. If a building code requiring two exits for bedroom egress is necessary for safety in STRs, it should be written into the city building codes, not in an STR ordinance. Safety should be an equal concern for all JB homes. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have no special presentations tonight and on announcements. It's bingo night tomorrow night, so what weather's supposed to be, Tina?
Perfect weather. Come on.
So I can attest to the fact that it's always fun and Tina makes it even funner. So pass the word and y'all all come out tomorrow night. All right, next are our reports from our directors. So first, let's see the administrator Francis.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of it, everyone can read in the agenda packet, but I do want to point out a couple things. We have a blood drive that's going to be taking place December 7th. More details will be following shortly. December 6th, I said, sorry, I said December, it is December 6th. My apologies. So good thing more details are to follow. And I was just told it's on the website as well. In regarding the beach access plan, beach user fee, we have received the comments from the GLO on both the due protection and beach access plan as well as the beach user fee plan. Right now, I'm responding to the ones that I can easily answer, but there are some that will still require council's input. We're also updating the plans proposed budget to account for actual year-end numbers. And then we will be reconvening, I would say probably bringing it back to the next meeting to have more discussion of it. So we are making some progress on that. And then still no word really on the beach nourishment. They're still looking through the contracts, their bids and financials. They have requested our payment portion of the match, so there is some progress. But again, beyond that, just a reminder to you as a council that the Happy Galveston Mayor's Association Dinner next Wednesday, the 13th. Other than that, I'd stand for questions.
You ready?
Go ahead.
Great. Is Chief around?
Oh, maybe one thing. We're close, a reminder that we're closed Monday for Veterans Day.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, anything to add to your report?
It was a safe weekend last weekend, a lucky weekend. We had no major incidents other than one wreck. And I had a little accident out here on 3005 on the motorcycle. I think he's okay, but other than that, it was a great weekend. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Quintero, do you have anything to add to your report?
Nothing.
Nope, how's the bulkhead going?
The bulkhead, I had to go get on them today because they were chipping a little, they had to chip out the new panels, and they were dumping some of the concrete in the, in the canal. We stopped them immediately once it was reported, and they apologized. They went to, they went to fish it out, and so we'll just try to pick up as much as we can.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Chief Fagan visited an event next door. All right, next is approval of the minutes. So on our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting on 10/24/2024?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Do you have a second? A second? Okay, all in favor of approving of the minutes as posted from the regular city council meeting on October 24, 2024? Okay, next, thank you. Okay, next we have comments, reports from members of council. Let's start with us.
I think you start with me.
Okay. Gil, you're up first.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
All right. Well, I wanted to mention that we had a really great blessing of the motorcycles and bikers on Saturday. I really appreciate Tina collaborating with, who happens to be my neighbor, David Dillman, and it was just a really wonderful opportunity for the three of us and your husband Felix. We had a really, really great time. A lot of bikers showed up, especially at the end. But we also enjoyed our camaraderie and enjoyed talking about motorcycle rides and things like that. Miss you there, Erin. So, but anyway, several bikers attended, and it was just a blessing for all of us that attended. I think we were just as equally blessed as the bikers were, so thank you for that. Thank you for coordinating that, Tina. And also, too, I want to thank Chief Garibby for attending the training where I work at Resourcing Crisis Center, Galveston County, yesterday on domestic violence, high-risk response team. It was a homicide model training, so I really appreciate. Chief, if you can hear me, thank you so much for being there yesterday. And then also, too, I want to thank the citizens. You know, we had a lot of posts going out with the, from the city out on social media, and also repost on the JB community pages on Facebook. So I just want to thank the citizens for all the positive comments and responses because that means a lot. So that's what I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to mention National Night Out was a great success. Thank you, Chief Garibby. I sat and watched as our police officers played and interacted with our children. I saw officers pushing the children out on the swings and catching them as they're coming down the slides. I will admit that it brought tears to my eyes to watch these children have fun with our police officers. I just want them to know that they are safe, and if they're ever in trouble, to know that they can go to our police officers. And my heart was just full of both. And, but thank you again, Chief Garibby. You and your wife make life fun here, and you set a fine example for community policing. Thank you for everyone that was involved. And Tina, you did a great job. I know that that day, you got there, I asked her husband, and you got there way early, and you didn't leave till way, way late. It was a long day for you. Bravo, you did a marvelous job. Thank you. Also, I want to, I'm into data, and I noticed that voter turnout for Galveston County was 64.54%, so that's pretty incredible. I think the primaries was around, was under 20% if I remember right. Veterans Day is November 11th. This is something that's special to my heart as I'm wearing this. And if you'd like to, any ship stars, of course, come to me, come to City Hall. My numbers are about, we're nearing 9,000 stars that we have shared so far. So thank you to all my volunteers, thank you. It means a lot to me, it means a lot to the people that we share the list to. Thank you very much, Mayor.
I just wanted to second that the Halloween thing was really awesome. I got there at eight or nine in the morning, and Tina already had it set up like crazy. It was really hot for a Halloween day party, but it was awesome. We didn't make it to the nighttime part, but we did the dance. Me and my kids went out there with my wife, and the market was awesome. Everything was pretty cool out there, so great job. The second thing was the mosquito truck. I know we've had it running a few times, I've heard it. I was just curious if we have a procedure for the mosquito truck? As far as after it rains, when will it run? How many days in a row will it run? Or is it kind of unavailability? And we may not have a policy yet, but maybe we could all try to come up with something or see what other cities are doing.
We are developing a policy. We're looking at some of the other cities, but we've had discussions. We know that now that we've had some rain, they're going to start popping out again, so it will be out operating. It needed brakes replaced first, so we had to take care of that. That's all I have.
So I feel everyone else for that day, for Halloween. The golf carts were decorated very well. I thought that was a lot of fun. I got the chance to cheer them on. The trunk retreat for the kids, that was a lot of fun. It was great. The National Night Out, I'm sorry you couldn't make it, those of us who did, it was fun. I was not doing any dancing, of course, but it was a great time. And congrats, you pulled it off. It was, I got a lot of really positive feedback there. So thank you, Tina, and everyone who participated. It was a lot of, very good time, and your husband. That's it for me.
Okay, we're out of the new business. So next up on the agenda is discussion and consideration of the proposed changes to the short-term rental ordinance. And do I have a motion to discuss?
Make a motion to discuss.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Okay. All right, we have Ms. Bagley here.
I assume this is where you want it?
Yes. It is. So to kind of recap, you know, last week, we had put a list together of proposed changes to a combined STR. You know, the first objective is to roll it all into one, so it's not as confusing as it currently is. And then the second was to look at tweaks where we've identified some gaps. So as we had that discussion, there was the most discussion around, can we prohibit any more licenses? Can we say no more or put some type of cap on it? And in that discussion, issues were raised on the legality of doing that. And what, can we legally say we're going to put some type of cap or prevent any more permits from being issued for short-term rentals? And so what council discussed was, well, let's have our legal counsel come, and let's have a question and answer, and let's all hear it together, and then have conversations and questions from Bagley. So at this point, Bridget, I'm going to ask you to kind of recap previous conversations, where we're at. Can we do it, can we not do it? And then we'll take it, Bridget.
Yes, okay. First of all, Mayor and Council, hello. I've never, Mayor, I've gone to for years, and this is my first time to meet you. I'm kind of a little bit new as well. I'm Bridget Bagley, and you're City Attorney. Well, I work for Olson and Olson, I'm just the one that's assigned to you all. My name, my last name's got that Y at the end, it doesn't in real life, but you all said my name right. And if I could add the Y, it would really help out. So yeah, Bridget Bagley. I wrote just a little something, I'm not going to read the whole time, but just because I know this is a tough issue. I'm in cities almost every night, last night to 1:00 a.m. I hope to not get done with the meeting until then. So I wanted to, I know, I want ideas tonight. Y'all are my early, so.
Don't get any ideas.
So anyway, I wrote just a little bit just to acknowledge, I know, you know, it's a hard topic. I acknowledge what you all are doing is hard, you all being regulated. I totally understand your concerns and everything like that. So let me do this. Before I start, I will say this is a very unsettled area of law in the state of Texas. It's gray, that's why we have lawyers. If it was black and white, I wouldn't have a job. Many cities regulate in many different ways. Some cities have STR bans, some cities have caps, some cities have no regulations at all. Some cities regulate the number of people allowed on the property. Just because a city regulates a certain way does not mean that that way is proper or constitutional. It simply means it has not been invalidated by a court. Starting very broadly here, there is no constitutional right to rent your home as a short-term rental, as the law stands today. Okay, the Texas Supreme Court hasn't said that is a right. The Texas Supreme Court has issued no opinion on a constitutional right to rent your property as a short-term rental. There is a vested right to lease your property. That's a, that's period of right that we have as homeowners. But the Texas Supreme Court has not taken up an STR regulation case. It has taken up some cases that have STRs as kind of some factual portions of the case, but it has not been specific to regulations. There have been plenty of cases by lower courts and appellate courts about the constitutionality of STR regulations and what vested property rights property owners have. In 2021, an appellate court in Fort Worth specifically declined to hold that property owners have a vested right to lease their property on a short-term basis. The court stated that a property owner has a vested right to lease their property but did not go into the durational restrictions implicitly imposed by STR ordinances. The parties in that case, that was the Grapevine case, Grapevine versus Munn's. They actually did petition the Texas Supreme Court to hear that case. Normally, both parties don't petition the Supreme Court. One party, the losing party, petitions the higher court. Hey, can you hear this? In this case, both parties petition the Supreme Court. We need guidance. Please help us, tell us what's legal. The Supreme Court did not grant certification to hear that. The reason being is there was a lot of administrative issues in the background, so the courts said, this isn't the case for us to do this. There will be a case for us to do this, but this isn't it because we'd have to solve these other issues. We probably wouldn't even reach the main issue, so we probably just have to send it down to the trial court anyway. So one case that has given us a decent amount of guidance is the Zatari case out of the city of Austin. This is where we get the retroactivity prohibition. So we cannot retroactively take your short-term rental permits away or your license away. So we cannot retroactively take your short-term rental permits away, or your license away. If it was allowed before, I believe in our situation, we had an ordinance, you could get your permit, people had it. When we then adopted this new ordinance, we couldn't take away those permits. They had that right, it's a vested right, we couldn't take it away. That was one of the main things I told you guys, you couldn't do it, and we didn't do that. So we cannot retroactively apply our ordinance, meaning we cannot take away a permit. See, I'm building off, I should have just read this. Our ordinance does not do that. Our ordinance does impose regulations on previously obtained permits, which is an authority granted to a city under its police power, and the type of retroactive application of regulations. So it's, we do that in lots of different areas of law. You know, if we change certain regulations on a house, or on a certain property or zone, they're a non-compliant property unless, but what if they rebuild, or something like that? We make them come into compliance with our law. So that's, that's the way we do that. So here are some things we know for sure about S T R law. There is a constitutional right to lease your property. A city cannot retroactively ban S T Rs that are already in existence. And then regulations on short-term rentals need to be at least rationally related to a legitimate government interest, or, we don't know which test the court is going to put on this, but ordinarily tailored to serve a compelling government interest. Courts, trial courts and appellate courts have applied both tests, those are very different tests. We don't know which one the Texas Supreme Court will apply, with, when, and if that goes up. So everything I have done for you all, I have done with my eye towards the most conservative reading. So I have provided that strict scrutiny test against y'all's ordinances, and so that's why things have been written the way they are. So, want to answer your question. Can we put a cap on short-term rentals? I do not have a case that has said that's constitutional, because it hasn't gone up, it hasn't been taken up. But what I know is, it's not applying anything retroactively. So I think that a ban would be possible, and would be legal and defensible, until a case got taken up to the Texas Supreme Court, and they tell us whether it's allowed or not.
How much does that cost?
Well, hopefully it won't be us.
Explain the Tiki, the Tiki Island.
Yeah, the Tiki case, that one started, I'm going to find my thing on that too. In that case, the court basically said there was no ordinance. Tiki initially got it. Some homeowners started renting their property on a short-term basis, and then the Tiki, and actually, it was the city, right? It was not the HOA. The city brought it, adopted an ordinance and said, and banned short-term rentals. None of them, can't have any. And the court said, there were three different types of plaintiffs in the case. Some were plaintiffs that had started renting their property on a short-term basis, before the ordinance went into effect. And other people in the case were plaintiffs that hadn't started renting their property until the ordinance went into effect. And so the court said, those of you who were in before the ordinance was put into effect, you get to keep yours, because Texas Constitution says we can't retroactively prohibit this. The set of plaintiffs that had not started their short-term rental property until after the ordinance, the court said you're allowed to prevent that.
What is the current? I think Arlington just passed something recently, that I haven't gotten, looked into it specifically. I know Dallas is trying to do something, and my understanding is that the court said you could, they had to continue allowing it until the case was heard. Basically, an injunction against enforcing that ordinance until it had, it had been heard. But. Counsel, any questions?
So what's, what's your position on the legality of, I know some of the comments during the earlier citizen comment section was regarding basically removal of a permit based on non-compliance, or whether or not there, you know, the three strikes rule, if you will, or whether it was through non-payment of taxes, or some other means, right?
Yes, so I felt like those questions were more towards you guys. If you want to set it up to where it's only a convicted citation, or you gotta have three convicted citations before you pull a permit, if those are the regulations you want to put in your ordinance, I think you can do that. Is your question like, if, if they lose their permit?
Yeah, I just, if I explain, I'm trying to take a look at this and say, okay, you can't retroactively remove permits, right? So without any justification behind it, but if there is a justification, as mentioned, then that's a different.
Yeah, I think that's part of our police power.
Okay.
You can do it, but you have to do it right, you have to respect to our rules.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. I have a couple, is that okay?
Yeah.
That's what she's here for.
Only one.
It's really a pleasure to meet you.
Yeah, you as well.
You, we have, and I appreciate your guidance very much, so. But I also want you to know that I am against any kind of grandfathering. And the, or, I see it as a Fourteenth Amendment issue, with the no state shall make or enforce any law, blah, 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 or property without due process of law. And so I see it, a clear cut for me. But if we, if three members can vote on this, and it would pass, and if council did vote, or decide to place a cap, grandfather S T Rs, is your firm confident that you could win a lawsuit? Because it's definitely going to become a.
We are confident that we can vigorously defend you. I can never, I can never guarantee a win. Yeah, I can't guarantee a win. We can make this ordinance as defensible as possible. And like I said, I've written it in a way that is as conservative as I can be, based on the case law that is out there already. And I've, we've done a lot of tying the regulations to very compelling government interests, such as health and safety. We've faced a lot of the regulations on the fire code, based on our fire marshal. These are things that were not done in the other cases. They were things that the court actually alluded to as things that might help get an S T R regulation across the line of constitutional.
Regulation isn't, isn't a ban?
Sure, sure. Agreed.
And had, has Olson and Olson represented any monitipality in an S T R lawsuit like this? And if so, what was the outcome?
Yes, we did. We represented the city of Dickinson in, I bet I don't have the name of it. And we lost in the trial court, the city lost in the trial court. It's currently being appealed. It is not uncommon for a city to lose at the trial court. That, we lose a lot at the trial court. We are the government, we walk in and we are automatically the bad guys. Judges are elected for better or for worse, and they want to make sure their plaintiffs get their day in court. So a lot of times, we lose at the trial court, and we go up on appeal. And where the appointed judges are, we tend to be more victorious in the appellate court. That's just how it plays out.
What was the details of the Dickinson case? Was it trying to go retroactive?
In that one, I wish I had brought Allison with me. Let me see, I brought part of the brief. I didn't argue this case, by the way. I wasn't part of this one, sorry, I don't know what else to tell by my head. I know that it was a party house, a typical problem home, that was, you know, saying you can sleep thirty people here, the city was trying to regulate that. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know the, I don't remember the exact issue of it, but I can absolutely provide that to you all, subsequent to this, because I know that would be helpful.
And I, the, I know this may, you may not be able to, but what kind of cost would, did Dickinson have to get to where he lost it, and now there's an appeal?
Extremely expensive, I mean, period. Religations expensive.
Hundreds of thousands?
I'm going to say, you're definitely going to hit six figures, if you're going to an appeal. Yeah, and then it just goes up from there. This frankly, the way Allison, who's the attorney at my firm, that's doing this Dickinson case, that's getting appealed very shortly, and she says it would be a really good one for the Supreme Court to take up. So it could be that case, it could not be, but yes, it's extremely expensive to litigate, period.
And one, just one more that I've got listed here. It's been rumored around, and I've heard both things, is someone mentioned that we could use hot taps to.
To pay for that. My bet is that's a hard no.
I sort of thought so, but that, but that does, thank you very much. What other questions? So, so kind of to recap, at this date, there's nothing, no cases been out there that have supported a ban on moving forward? Other than maybe the Tiki case is banned, right? And that one was upheld?
Correct.
But no other known ones where they banned any more moving forward?
None that I saw in my research of this.
Okay. I wasn't sure, like I said, I thought Arlington had passed something recently, that they were doing, like recognizing that it was going to go further to court. And.
Is there any difference legally between just putting a cap on, say, none moving forward at all, regardless, or versus you have a lifelong grandfathering, as long as you own the property, to have a short-term rental, but you lose it at the sale of that property? Is there any difference in that?
No, because it's about what right has, was vested when you purchased, or when, while you were living there. If you started your S T R, and then we put an ordinance into effect, we can't take that away from you. But if, even if you owned here, and you have the right to put up an S T R, or start renting your property as an S T R, and you don't do it, and we put the ordinance in, case law is showing currently that we can prohibit you from running an S T R on your property.
So it doesn't make any difference offering a grandfathering?
It would make a difference if you guys said, anyone who owns here, as of the date we put in this new regulation, that would definitely make a difference. Because then anyone who owns here and isn't operating an S T R would still have the opportunity to come in and obtain a permit, even though someone who then purchased after that would not.
Yep.
Does it in any way change that if we allow some exceptions? Such as, we would allow it to go in depth in divorce, or anything? Does that, if it's not the same for everybody involved, does that change?
As long as you don't base it on a protected class, you guys can make your, make your regulations as you see fit. You can't say, men can't, but women can, please don't do that. You will lose. But if you want to be able to extend it to, if I got, I inherited this house, or I got divorced, and now my name's on the house, if you wanted to extend it to that, I'm okay with that.
What about, I want to retain my right to have that option to someone I want to sell to?
Yep, I see where that rubber meets the road, but for the seller. I don't think there's any legal implication here. As the law stands today, in that sense.
So the seller could say that this house could, could not?
They could not, could not do that.
I got you. Not if an ordinance is in place that says, title transfer, unless it's through these recognized means, then the house would not be allowed to be original.
A short-term, right.
And we are talking short-term rentals, not long-term leases.
Which is going to be fascinating, when the Texas Supreme Court finally takes this, because what is the difference between renting my house for thirty days, and renting my house for thirty-one? So that's going to be fascinating. And I can only advise you on how the law stands today, so we'll see how they make that different, how they make that different.
Now, one action that Houston's taking is, they're trying to classify S T Rs as hotels. So do you know anything about that? You know, they started it, and then they put it on pause, now they brought it up again.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. It'll be interesting to see those big cities do things, and then they trickle down to the small cities that take notes and make sure they do it the right way. So I've not seen that, though.
Or even commercial properties in general?
Right. Yeah.
I don't think that's been taken up yet.
Yeah, I saw it was a recent revival event in November, no, sorry, October.
Yeah. I'd be surprised if there wasn't anything in the next legislative session where they try to start making some of this gray a little bit clearer. Especially since the Texas Supreme Court didn't hear that case. So.
All right. Yeah, yeah, anybody has any questions?
A lot's been said. And I guess we'll get some type of transcript on her interpretations, things that's been said, ins and outs. Because I'm personally in favor of some type of a cap. I'm just as in favor of protecting the rights of the owners of the property. And some of the things that you said are very interesting. One that you said basically is that Supreme Court of Texas has yet to run a cap, and they have a choice of how to do this. And what you're saying is there's a time gap until it's done, that would permit or support creating some type of a cap. I think that's what I heard.
Yep, for the time being, I believe a cap would be appropriate.
Yes.
Legally speaking, it's up, I don't do policy, thanks to you guys.
Also with that, I mean, also our ordinances, ordinance, in my mind, must meet the test of reason. It must be reasonable. Do you see anything in the ordinance that we have now that is unreasonable?
You know, honestly, I read this ordinance again the other day, preparing for this, word for word, and I haven't done that since we put it all together. Actually, I really like this ordinance. I, I, because I was reading the other cases, and you know, what the court says may get you past the constitutionality line, we got in here. They say that a compelling government interest is health, safety, payment of taxes, and we've got those in the whereas clauses, but this is for health, safety, and for the payment of hot taxes.
There's a lot in there.
There's a lot, oh yeah. And I, I'd actually love for a court to look at this, because I actually think it's very well thought out. And, you know, we give a reason for every regulation, basically. It's way more detailed than really any other short-term rental ordinance I've worked with. So I, as it, as it stands today, I don't see anything that is a really big red flag for me, other than the fact that this is just a really unsettled area of law. And so at the flip of a hat, the Supreme Court grants cert.
There are several things in there, and I haven't made a list of them, but just off the top. One was the thirty days, notice or inspection. I mean, what's happening there in my mind is that trust be verified. Because I understand that we get, and they're, and an application, and basically that tells us how many bedrooms and bathrooms and things are there, which establishes, right? So if, if. So, if, 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 if we think we need to verify that, I think ordinance says that we, we can give thirty days notice, ask permission, it's a contract, party, to the party. And we could do that, and you feel that, you don't, you don't think that's an unreasonable violation of property owner's rights?
No, sir, the, the Texas Legislature has delegated cities the police power to regulate health and safety and that is what that inspection, being granted permission to inspect does. When we talked about the inspection initially, uh, me and the mayor and Kendall, uh, I talked about, you know, see what your municipal judge would wanna see, you know, what does she or he want to see before they'll, they'd be willing to prosecute under that section or convict under, a charge under that section? Does he or she want a, feel way more comfortable, like come to me first, I'll give you a warrant, then you guys go in. I think as written, I think it is fine here, this is actually a fire code, um, it's a fire code issue and you're, again, that's all granted by the legislature to cities through the police tower. So we can go in, even not under a short term rental ordinance, but to inspect and make sure certain codes are met.
Thank you.
But in that case, you would have probable cause? It's just not a, you can go in anytime with a, so how?
In the building code.
Probable causes for search and seizure.
Right.
Yeah, that's more, that's more on the criminal side. But, I, there's also the point that, uh, council member made about the, you know, this is, this is also a contract you're agreeing. You come get a permit through this, you wanna be licensed through this, this is something that we do.
But it doesn't, it doesn't say that though, does it?
Say what?
Did they, does the, this ordinance say that? Does the contract, when, when you sign and pay your two fifty, does it say that, that you're giving up the right to?
Well, yeah, it says, we're, we can come in, we'll give you thirty days notice. So that's written in there.
Yeah. The owners are agreeing to that.
If you come in to get a permit, you know you're pulling it under this, you have, you're, you're subject to all of these regulations.
Correct, you're agreeing to it.
Well, I disagree with that part. The application you sign acknowledging that you will comply with the ordinance is written. So, there's a bunch of signatures required on that application, the initial, 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 that, that you will follow this, you will follow this, you will follow this, so with the final signature at the end. So, yes, our application process is acknowledgement that you will adhere to that ordinance.
It's a voluntary application also, you're not forced to enter into it if you don't agree with anything.
Well, you still have, alright, you, you still have your fourteenth amendment, that's what I'm concerned about and if, um, I'm just looking at, at it from that direction.
But I think if you entered into a contract, right, then you're, you're voluntarily allowing that. I mean, the recourse is you don't sign it, you don't get the permit, right? If you don't want someone there, then you don't sign the contract.
To some degree, I think that could prove an honest test of reason. To some degree, in each case it is.
I, I mean, it's a, it's a little like you build a house in this neighborhood and you agree to build it to current codes. And if you don't build it to current codes and when you come get a building permit, it's a contract that says, I will build to these city standards, and if I don't, I can suffer the consequences.
And so, and expect that I could.
So it's, it's along that same line, I, when you.
Out of this whole ordinance, I'm the most confident that that is the most legal part of this. So.
Does that apply to thirty, over thirty days? Do they need a contract to rent their houses for over thirty days, not necessarily an STR?
This, this ordinance does not apply to leasing over thirty days, for a thirty day period.
So those laws that are implemented on STRs do not apply to long term rentals?
Yes, correct.
And even then, they don't fall into a contract?
Yeah, the ordinance.
They're, right, so charge and possession.
But you don't have a.
Less than thirty days.
So there's no problem with renting your house over thirty days compared of? So what's the difference between somebody renting a house for thirty, over thirty days compared to an STR?
You, you have put the pen right in the problem that the Texas Supreme Court is gonna have to confront.
What about the case in Dallas, what about the case in Austin?
So, the mayor talks about the Austin case, I don't know, I'm not that unfamiliar with the Dallas case. I'm afraid I'm not familiar. Yeah, we're not discussing long term rentals.
I, I do have a.
Yes.
So, based on your argument that these are health, safety issues, if we were to exempt a part of the city from the ban, does that, or from the cap, does that somehow change?
Exempt part of the city from your cap?
Repeat it again, repeat it again?
If, if you were to, could we exempt part of the city from the cap on, on STR rent, on more STRs?
I think that too.
Her, her argument was that these were based on health and safety regulations, that's where it allows us to do some of this. Could we then say, part of the city, we don't care about your health and safety?
Yeah, exactly, the analysis would be what makes those in that area different, as it relates to health and safety.
But if we were to, to put a cap and say no more, um, I mean, I don't know how we can, you know, help me here. I don't know how we can attach that to health and safety, say no more. How they operate the one, you know, how they operate it can pertain to health and safety, but saying we're only allowing so many.
Well, how many boys do you have in the city?
Ten or more, we have to eight.
What, what can we reasonably devote our time to regulating? How many can we actually devote our time to regulating? How many can the city take, I mean, you, you can even go into kind of a geographical, you know, can you reach through, can you get to every house from a row, I mean, I don't, I think your main argument is you're a small city, you can only regulate so much, you can only enforce so much, and so, I think that's a pretty good, reasonable one.
Well, as we, as we look at it, um, and, and I look at traditional Jamaica Beach, right? Uh, traditionally Jamaica Beach has been a, um, you know, much more family centric community. And yes, there's always been, we've always shared our homes and there's been rentals here always. But not a majority of rentals, which is the situation we're approaching. When I look, when I say majority, I mean a majority of number of bodies on site, right? As far as actual houses go, I think we're at twenty-three percent right now. But, on any given day, when you look at our weekenders and our S and Ts, right? So, um, but, when you look at south of three double O five, which is the beach side, the, the beach side has, has always been predominantly, you know, non, more, uh, homeowners living there, you know, and using, utilizing it, be it, be it on a weekend, be it full time. So, I think the question was if we were to say, you know, that this area has traditionally been a higher concentration of rentals than the rest of the city. And, and therefore, you know, would we look at a different regulation there, right?
But you would almost have to address that through zoning, right, or some other means to, to segment it, because otherwise everything's the same, there's something else that has to, you know, delineate that.
Yeah, I, I think that would be your best bet, my concern with saying this side, no cap, is then negating all of our arguments on health and safety for the rest of the city. The court's gonna say, well, over here you said it's open, free for all, you don't care about them apparently, so really it must not be that important, it's not a compelling interest, you're not narrowly tailored, throw it all out. That's what I wouldn't want, right, wouldn't wanna step on our own argument.
Can't profile this thing.
Right, cause it, yeah, and it's not an illegal way to differentiate, it's just I don't wanna step on our own argument. So perhaps through zoning is a way to do that.
That was a good question.
You could, but I think it would be, I miss you.
We have a question from the back, but I, John, I need you to, to walk up and say your, your name and your interest. And Marisol, next time, if you have a comment, I need you to come up, please.
My name is John Mercer and I'm curious. You got the thirty or the thirty-one days? Are you saying that if I am a property owner here in this town, that I can rent my house out like twelve nights? Or can I rent it out for thirty-one days, I'll be an STR? Under the normal long term rental, what if my renter stays there three weeks? Am I prohibited from then releasing it, uh, re-leasing it for the next thirty-one days even though it's only been twenty-seven days? Can I lease it to someone who can then sublet? Is that prohibited in your ordinance?
I think our leasing, we actually do have a long term leasing ordinance.
We actually do.
We've just never been enforced.
But subletting STRs was a, was a, or subletting, uh, is something that we haven't addressed. Subletting as an STR.
They have to.
Yes.
With that, you would have to.
And they wouldn't be able to register it, because it's already registered.
Can I say something too?
I should, just.
I remember a year ago, um, we were at twenty-seven percent, now we're down to twenty-three percent. Maybe it's just self-regulated.
Might be charged to come back up to fifty percent next year, creating hard regulations.
We, we know that the current atmosphere has, uh, that the short term rental market has not been profitable this past year for many reasons. And so, yes, there are homes on the market and homes have sold because, because of that.
I think I've heard this.
But, but I think it's, it's cyclical, right? I mean, yes, the market's not profitable today, but it'll pick up again. So, uh, you know, based on the economy and based on people's travel preferences. So, um.
Well, the basic thing is what type of community we want. You know, an owner, I was gonna buy a house in here, I would not want to live in a community that was a motel. It's very simple.
Marisol, do you have a comment, you can come up, please?
Yes. I just wanted to hand it to the House Department, and one of, and there was a couple of real estate agents in there. And when we told them that we lived in JB.
Could you speak up?
Speak up.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yeah. When we explained to them that we lived in JB, they're like, oh, how are you guys doing with all the regulations? And I'm like, my husband's like, what regulations? She was, yeah, something to do with the STRs, it's like, there are a lot of people that are not interested in buying JB anymore. I could not show houses. There's over sixty-two houses for sale in Jamaica Beach, and she says not one buyer wanted to come look at them. And this was just last week. And this is not one real estate agent, two real estate agents. And they're friends. So I was like, what the world? So I told my husband, it's like, hey, we wanted to sell, nobody wants to buy here, because of the unknown. But it's not only affecting those of us who want to do STRs legally, but it's affecting every homeowner in the Jamaica Beach city, whether we like it or not. So, I just wanna emphasize on that, really.
I'm glad for that comment too, actually, uh, real quick, I'm glad for that comment that you said it's affecting everyone here because I think that's absolutely true, because I've had similar discussions on the other side of that where people have, uh, you know, uh, taken away their earnest money because they found out after the fact that the home that they were going to purchase was next to an STR. So, there's two sides of that story, right? It does truly affect everyone here, every homeowner, right? Because the reverse effect can be true.
Yeah, listen, you said everyone showed out for this presidential election, but they don't in the primary, and they don't for local elections. And you guys are what make the most impact on our day-to-day lives. One of my rebuttals would be to the fact that this would, is changing is, you guys know seventy-two hours and an affirmative vote, and it has changed. Okay, nothing you guys do today, it's permanent. You get, you get the next council up there and you get seventy-two hours with an agenda posted, and it changes. So, uh, you know, everything's volatile, every, you know, every city, you know, things could change overnight. Supreme Court could give us something overnight and things change, that's where every ordinance we ever put into effect, so, yeah.
Sure.
May I have a question, if you come up and, Dick, name it.
Linda McDonald, forty-four thirteen Pelican Way. Um, my question comment is that the city of Austin, the city of Dallas, the city of Houston, those cities have some really big pockets. This is city of Jamaica Beach, I would sure hate to see my tax dollars, which I pay a lot for here, I would sure hate my tax dollars to go towards litigation that hasn't been proven yet. So, I really hope whatever decision you guys make, that you're going to be good stewards of my tax money when this comes up for litigation, because Austin came up for litigation, they didn't pursue it because they, it ended up costing so much money, so they went to just support their ordinances. None of these cases have been proven yet all the way?
Supreme Court hasn't spoken to it.
The Supreme Court hasn't spoken to it, so are we willing to take my tax dollars to take this all the way to the Supreme Court? Because my pockets aren't that big.
Thank you.
I think that's a good point also, that also has an inverse, there are a lot of people that want us to solve this problem, even if it costs city money to do so.
Well, just the opposite, I'm kind of living in STRs all around me, I would like some full time. So I would like to see it bring full time or part-time people here rather than a whole street of STRs. Now, the STRs this year haven't been a problem, so we've been thankful for that. But in the past, we've had problems, but I'd like some papers that I know.
It's not affecting those already here.
What is the difference between making a contract, so they're gonna put a ordinance, they're gonna make a contract for an STR? You say you have an ordinance for full, for, um, over thirty days, over thirty-one days rentals. Do you also have them in the contract? And how would that affect STRs and long term rentals? Since there's one with a contract and there's one without, but yet they still rent the houses?
Yeah, a lease is different, yeah. A lease is different.
Supreme Court has created a right to do that.
She knows what I'm talking about, she knows, I, she'll explain to you. It's the contract. It's the contract, the contract.
It's the application.
It's the application.
Right, but is there an application for long term rentals? Why? Why, why isn't there a contract for long term rentals? When they can still rent the house?
I believe by our ordinance, there is a permit that's supposed to be issued for long term rentals.
Oh, supposed to be.
Yeah, I think the contract we're referring to is the fact that there's an application process. You know that you're pulling a permit for that and you know you're gonna be subject to the rules. I got my Texas driver's license, I'm subject to the rules of Texas.
Right.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
I have.
Let me know if I need to provide.
Yes.
I made it before one AM.
You would not believe, watch the video of the meeting, I'm sitting there and it hits about midnight and I just got up and stood behind my chair and was like, whoa.
Thank you.
If you may, if you have anything. I'm happy to say.
Do you want to, to move item three up to two in case we, uh, would like a little more? Do you want to, to move item three up to two in case we would like a little more input on?
Wow, wow, we have legal fear.
We, we might need you one more minute.
Sure.
But to, to kind of summarize.
The clock's still running.
The, the plan for this is, we are, based on our conversations last week, and I hope all of you reviewed the minutes and refreshed where we were at. We'll bring forward next time the proposed combined ordinance, you know, pulling everything into one, and have that for review, so, you know, we talked about, I know you've already started pulling it all together into one. And then we'll get with you on comments from last week, last time, last meeting, and, and tweak it accordingly. And, and then we'll move forward that way. So, um.
Do we need to close this one now?
And, um, there wasn't an action today, it was just discussion, right? Um, it's just getting feedback and input, and we'll tweak the ordinance and bring it forward. And we're not voting on it yet next time, we're just gonna review it and, and see where we go from there, okay? All right, so next on the agenda, we're gonna, am I allowed to switch the order, Kendall?
No, not really, not, not, no, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Next is discussion and consideration of potential wastewater treatment plant electrical project. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I have a motion to discuss the wastewater treatment plant electrical project?
No, I can't. So.
I'll send it back.
I'll send you to it. Did you get that, Kendall? Okay, so last time we talked about, we had a proposal on redoing, providing a generator and redoing the electrical systems at the wastewater treatment plant. And as y'all all know, we had gone out and gotten a budgetary quote kind of number and a scope, you know, a high-level scope of work. So we have today with us Brian Kramer, who's our kind of engineer representative for the city. He helps us the most, and, and John Mercer is the owner of, he was Mercer, now they merged with Lynn. So they're here to give us more specifics about, we had asked for more detail around, scroll on down, Kendall.
Yeah, around this, I mean, at your, at your desk is a, is a breakdown. Um, and I didn't have it up here, so I will be.
Yeah, so, um.
Well, I, I went back and watched the last council meeting, the thirty minutes of the discussion on this, and y'all had several questions, so we're here to answer y'all's questions. So, uh, the ninety-three, the ninety-three thousand dollars in engineering fees is for the design, to design engineering, to, to bid the project out, and for the construction, the engineering and construction management of, of the project. So it, it does include, it does include all, all of that. It does not include inspection fees for a onsite inspector. Those are, those are generally in our contract as a separate line item. Uh, and we bill, bill per hour, depends on the contractor, if you have a good contractor. Sometimes they're here two hours a week, you have a bad contractor, they're here two hours a day, six hours a day, you know, sometimes. So, the, you know, so that's, that's how that, that's how that was, uh, how that was broken out.
Okay, so for the preliminary engineering and the, the final design engineering, who would be doing that engineering? I, I know you're a civil engineer, but I am not an electrical engineer. So, uh, does Lynn Engineering have a big enough umbrella?
We would, we would sub it out to an electrical engineer.
Okay.
There's, there's civil engineering involved in this project.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we've got to build the.
Somebody's gotta be the prime, somebody's gotta.
Yes.
Provide the services at the meeting.
Right. Okay, what other questions, Council, do y'all? I mean, I have, I have a few, but I'll jump in.
Could I? I've got a few minutes to provide.
Could I have a few minutes of your time just to?
Absolutely.
Do something, uh, in about forty, forty years of being an engineer that I've done a number of times. A lot of times, city councils don't really know what all kind of laws they're responsible for complying with when it comes to getting a construction project. And I've mentioned, listened to, I listened to the tape of the meeting, and bid for engineering, bid for engineering. Number one, that's against the law. You can't bid for engineering professional services. State, there's a state law, I think you're, and he can confirm that, that says anything that has to do with public health and safety, an engineer has to design it, an engineer has to be constructed under an engineer. Like all the way back to the fifties with schoolhouse explosion, where natural gas exploded in the house, they passed the Texas Engineering Practices Act that says that anything has to do with that has to be designed by an engineer. And it also says now that selection of an engineer cannot be based on price. You don't necessarily want the lowest-priced engineer to design your wastewater treatment plant, okay? You clearly get what you pay for. So you can't hire an engineer, or an architect, or a surveyor for professional services based upon the price. You have to select on qualifications, and then negotiate with the most qualified. The one you choose as being most qualified, you negotiate a price with him or that firm. If you cannot come to a price, then you negotiate with the second highest qualified, qualified firm. So that's the process that you're, by law, have to follow. We've been working for you for, goodness, close to twenty years. You evidently have thought we were qualified to do something, or you wouldn't have kept using us. So I think you, we have passed the qualification test, unless we get into some, and you say, we want an electrical engineer to be the prime engineer on this project. And then, fine, you go out and you go through an advertising process, and you solicit proposals, not price proposals, because it's against the law for me to give you a price. So you solicit price proposals, and you go through a qualifications-based assessment, and you select one, and you go through the process. If you think we're qualified to do the civil and the structural, and you trust us to be your representative in all engineering matters, then I think we're qualified to do that. The normal process for getting a contract of project construction, the most common is what we call the design bid build. You hire an engineering firm to develop your project, to work with you to develop what your needs are. Every project is to solve a need. You've got a need. You hire someone to help you to find that need and come up with a plan to solve that need. That's the engineering function. We end up designing the project, preparing a full set of plans and specifications that is suitable, they give to a contractor and say, we want you to build this. There's enough information here for you to build this project under our supervision. We design all of that, we get it approved, it's got to go to T C Q, we get all the approvals. Then we assist you, we don't bid it. That's another thing I heard you say. And then the engineer go, the engineer bids the project. No, you bid the project, we assist you in putting it out for bids, you advertise it, you receive the bids. We evaluate the bids, we make a recommendation, but we don't award the bids, you award the bids. Okay, once you award the bids, then we assist with deciding, getting a contract signed to construction. And then we do what we call construction contract management. There are monthly things that you'll, like monthly applications for payments, there's submittals that have to be reviewed and approved. There's inspections that have to be made, there's all sorts of approvals. Until the project is closed out, then we do a certificate of substantial completion, substantial and final completion, until the project is completed and signed off on everything, and certified, not authorized, but recommend you make a final payment, including the retainment.
Do you review the bids if we go out and collect them, to review them?
Yes, we, we attend the bid opening, we, we will probably be here with a knife, open the envelopes. We'll read them out publicly, which is one of the things you have to do, that's public, and publicly read the bids. And we'll take those bids, and we'll check all the numbers, all the line items, tabulate them up, and contractors do let and say. And we tabulate all that, we check the contractor's references. Uh, if you're, if this is a three-quarter million project, and you've got two contractors, then five or ten thousand dollars, then let's check the references real close. If it costs you ten thousand dollars to build with one that you trust more, that has a better reputation, then spend the ten thousand dollars to not just go a little bit. So there's, yes, we, we're involved in all of that, and evaluating the contractors, evaluating whether they've got insurance, evaluating whether they've got a good bonding company, and all of those things are part of the engineering responsibility.
So you have, I'm assuming you've got some oil plate specifications and information, right?
In forty-five years, we.
Draw from.
Counsel, what he's talking about is there is a set of standard agreements, and contract agreements, and that, that Mercer uses, and that we've used on other contracts, that spell out all these details he's talking about. And basically, it's, it's, it's the Engineers' Joint Contract and Documents Committee, or the E J C D C. And the, this process and procedure is well spelled out, all, all these various details. And basically, it's an agreement between owner and engineer for professional services. And every bit of this is spelled out. And it's a very good document, that document.
That, that document specifies the engineers' responsibilities, the owners' responsibilities, the contractors' responsibilities. Specifies that the engineer is the first point of contact. You don't want the contract, you don't want the contractor to come in here to city council and say, you know, start complaining about what we're doing out on the job. That's, you're not engineers. And, you know, we're the first line, your communication, I don't want you going out to the contractor and saying, Joe, I need you to do this, and this, and this. Even though the plans say this, I want you to change it and do this. That's lawsuit city, okay? So, who's, the engineer has a lot of responsibility in, in these engineering contracts. And you have responsibility, you've got to pay bills, you've got to pay the engineer, you've got to pay the contractor, you've got to comply with everything that you've got to comply with. But, uh.
That's process, it's down every grain of sand.
There are other methods of getting contracts done. The design bid build, there's a construction manager, construction manager at risk. That's more like what y'all were talking about, that going and hiring a manager for the project, and he go out, he goes out and hires an engineer, and hires contractors. That puts the construction manager at risk, it's not an engineer. He's got the engineers working for him, paying his bill, but who's looking out for you? That says, the city really needs to go out and hire their own engineer to look over the shoulder of the engineer that the manager has hired, okay? Same thing with the design build, you can get a, hire a contractor who has engineering expertise. That's done all the time in, in industry. But it's a three-hundred-million-dollar project, and they say, well, if we can fast-track some of this, and get some of this done a whole lot faster, we're talking about saving over ten million dollars or twenty million dollars over the life of this contract by doing it faster, by having it all under one roof, fine. But generally, those firms, or those companies that do that, have their own engineers looking over somebody's shoulder also. You don't. You need to hire an engineer that you trust, that's looking out for your best interest above all else. And that's what you do when you hire an engineer like us. We, we work for you.
So, um, does anybody have any other questions of John or Brian?
We don't, we'll run down for sure.
My comment, Kendall, is, so, based on our procurement policy for professional services, by, at, at ninety-three thousand dollars, you know, we're, we're in state area where, you know, we're, we're required to bid it, but because this is for the engineering, engineering services, we don't have to.
You're not required to bid engineering services.
And that's what I needed to clarify.
A bid, to me, by definition, includes the price.
Yeah, professional services don't.
So this doesn't, this is what I was getting clarity on, is if, if the recommendation to counsel next time is to award the engineering services to Mercer Engineering, then we're within our procurement policy guidelines to do that.
Yes, I would say, yes.
That's, that's what I wanted to make sure, and that we were, we were all on board with that. I mean, today, we don't have any agenda discussed and approved, right?
If you don't like that price, then, then you contact us, and you say, John, you know, we think this price is too high.
Okay, this price is too high. Best advice all by.
Well, and, and one question, one question I, I do have is on, who would be doing the preliminary engineering?
It would be in our office together.
Okay, that's what I thought, so you'll.
Brian will be your, probably your first point of contact. I'll look over his shoulder, we work together.
And, and you would be basically putting the scope of work, the more detailed scope of work together to go out for a final engineering design bid, or proposal?
You decide to write a contract with us, and we'll get the electrical engineer online immediately. We'll start looking at the structural and everything else. We'll get more detail on the report that we put together, that he put together than we, than we sent to you.
The third-party engineer in the markups included in this as well.
Yes.
Okay, and then y'all would go out and, and seek a firm of your choice to do the final design?
We will be, the final designs come out here all the time. We will hire a subcontractor, sub-engineer, to do the point-to-point wiring, the control panels.
Okay.
But it will be under our name. People stamp this, those plans will be stamped by that engineer.
But it'll all be on the engineering. Well, my point, Counsel, is that I really appreciate you approaching us, you know, and offering these services.
Well, you don't know how much I appreciate y'all being in this office.
What I would prefer is that we come back with a request or proposal that specifies what we want. Okay? Of, of what we, our expectations are. And let him come back and.
So what you're, what you're saying is that we would like this expanded into a timeline, you know, more of a project scope.
I mean, I appreciate you approaching us with this all, it's, I like it. But the other side of this thing is that, we, Counsel, in the city, we should go out, request a proposal, listing what we want, what we expect from, from the services provider. Okay, because there are some other things in here that I think would be beneficial for this project.
Such as?
And then we're calling. I can read it out to you. I'll read my, my viewpoint to it out to you.
So, um.
I just sent it to you guys. You want me to do that? It might be dirt.
I don't think you have to read the whole thing, just if we were to go forward for a proposal, what else would you want in it? I mean, I would, I would want a little more of a timeline and a commitment to.
Specific things I think should be in it, not vague things. Well, I have specific things I think should be in it, not vague things.
If you were going out without having someone specific, you go out for, send out a request for qualifications for calling RFQ.
Well, I'll, I'll read, I'll read mine. In other words, this is where the city, we're.
Okay, read it. Read it.
The city of Jamaica Beach requests a proposal to furnish the professional services necessary to manage the engineering and construction work required to refurbish the city's wastewater treatment plant located at XXX, Highway three thousand and five, Jamaica Beach, Texas. Herein known as the Wastewater Treatment Plant Reprovision Project. The professional services provider shall develop the wastewater treatment plant refurbishment project scope of work, prepare the necessary bid packages, bid out the work and recommend award. Easily include the engineering. The base project scope is as shown in the attached findings and recommendations littered dated blah, 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 by Lynn Engineering. At the discretion of the city. At the discretion of the city. On the, this professional services agreement and the resulting agreements contract for the work shall be developed around the attached engineers joint contract documents for agreements between owners and engineers for professional services and the city of Jamaica Beach procurement policies. The professional services provider shall provide a plan, schedule for the water treatment, a plan and schedule for the water treatment refurbishment project through substantial completion and commissioning. The base water treatment plant refurbishment scope is as shown in the attached findings listed by Lynn Engineering. And that's all for now, I just stopped, I was kind of tired.
That's, that's basically what we have.
That's what you're proposing, it's just, it starts with this. The RFQ, we work from there.
RFQs, we obviously have a scope of services that the engineer is going to be requesting to do. The verbiage that you gave presented sort of a preamble to that RFQ.
Exactly.
Then here's the scope of services, design, bidding, construction phase, whatever. The only thing, the only issue I'd take is a timeline from initiation to substantial completion and commitment. I can't guarantee you it's a time that a contractor. I don't know how long a contractor is going to take. I have a project, a small water line project, one contractor bid ninety days and one doesn't bid a hundred and eighty. I've been, you know, I don't know how long a contractor is going to take to do things. We used to bid generators for, bid through in twelve months and now it's taking fourteen, sixteen.
I understand that's the touch of RFQ.
Yo, who would review the RFQs on our end as they come in? Do we have someone here qualified to review RFQs and provide guidance on who is the most qualified?
Uh, it's good terminology, an RFQ is a request for qualifications.
I think what you were talking about sending out. What I'm talking about sending out RFQ to get.
No, I'm not. No, they would do it all, if you, it's the same format he's talking about. The, the, is that, he said, he said, as a city normally, we would, we would request a proposal and we would state various things that, that we would expect. The contractor comes back, makes his proposal, clarifies all these things, all right? And then we go from there.
What we send back is a statement of, an SOQ. You send me an RFQ, I'll send you back an SOQ, which is a statement of qualifications. And the terminology gets confusing, like bids, or is it bids? Sometimes terminology. If you want to do that, if you want to send an RFQ to me, we'll, we'll respond to it, I'll even help you write the things.
But you're not questioning qualifications, you're asking more on this, on this scope that they have here, more definition to that, is it? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, knowing that, they would do that, and when they come back, they would take a real hard look at, at that letter. And you're also making some additional things you want, I know that you want to add to it, that just be the pumps, right? Solder station is a basic plant.
The first, the first thing that I'm going to ask you, if you send me an RFQ, are you sending it to anybody else? Because if you are, my response will, I'll have a dollar figure, that ninety-three thousand dollars goes away and start over.
I understand, I understand.
But that's the first question I'm going down.
On the premise that, that you said, that this is an engineering services contract, we're allowed to do that. But, and if we like what we see?
If you tell me.
I'm not saying we send it to anybody, but.
If you, if you tell me that I'm, we're the only ones you're talking to, then I'm going to give you a draft contract. It's going to have all that information in it, it's going to have responsibilities, it's going to have a scope of work. It's going to be thirty-five pages long. And it's going to have links in there, and we'll do preliminary design within so many days and final design in so many days and so, so it'll have all of that.
And that's where the confusion in terminology came, you know, we're talking about bidding that, it's not a true bid. It's, as you mentioned, it's, it's actually asking for qualifications, so you can't bid it as a dollar amount for engineering services.
So at, at this, at this point, kind of the question to counsel is, you know, my, my recommendation would be at the next council meeting, we had that, we have that request for qualifications, you know, ready to go forward to Mercer Engineering.
Don't wait, no, pause that off. I still think, I still think the terminology, because we're not questioning their qualifications to do this work.
You're just asking for a proposal.
Just asking a proposal.
This is a proposal.
Yes, we would be sending out a request or a more detailed proposal.
And, and we can do that, but, but what, what we don't want to confuse here is that we're saying, you know, we're a partner with this engineer now, and we say, we know what their qualifications are, we know that they're reputable, they've done great work for us in the past, we're partnering with them, and we, and negotiate if we want. We can accept what their, what this current proposal is, get more definition on it if we want. But we can choose to say, okay, we can do some negotiating or take it as it is. Or we can ask for this, uh, uh, request for qualifications from multiple other entities. And, but I'm just saying, that's what it is, right? That's, that's where we're at right now, we either make the choice to do that, or we make the other choice, which is to stay with Lynn. So we just need to be clear that those are our two choices.
And, and so I think the, what I'm proposing is that at the next meeting, we bring forward what we need to approve Lynn Engineering moving forward with the project.
Well, the reason is that we send in this request for proposal, they send it back to us, and that's what we bring to counsel.
Little, little, little different, that's, that's one step forward.
Yeah, expand to get it done.
And, and that has to be.
So you want me to send a proposal to them for the scope of work that we're using? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
I really thank y'all, just for this, hey, John, can you put together a draft?
Yes, that's what I.
An engineering agreement that we can review.
That's what we want, thank you. That is, that is what we're asking.
That, that is a proposal, I'm proposing to do it, proposing to do this work for this, under this contract.
Under this contract, yes.
But it would still be open to edits or adjustments?
Sure, it, it's, it's fifty years of draft until it's signed.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Yes.
And if there's things y'all want to add, like if y'all want to try to re-add the clarifier wall for this project two, you know, we can add, we can add the project.
I think, yeah, we were looking at, hang on, Mr. has a question, yes.
Oh, I'm just looking at, you know, we've got a, we're in a critical situation here with our wastewater treatment plant. I'm looking at here, the new information, and this is dated October eighth, and now we're at November seventh, let's get moving.
That's what we're trying to do.
Is two weeks a doable time to term that?
Not a problem. We've got a standard, standard format in that contract document that there's some things that,
Document that there's some things that two or three lines here and there that I want to The dem- indemnification clause that I want to look at that's in that standard contract and some other things.
Well, I think the only, the only thing we were looking at adding Kendall, besides the stone work that was always already presented, is possibly adding on a new call out system on the lift stations. Because we're probably going to do something skater related, you know, some skater related updates, upgrades. Recommended as a project and I, I do think we'd like to go forward with that. And as long as we're doing that, it seems like it would be logical to, to also look at what we're going to do with the lift stations for callouts. Cause we know most of them are broken.
Right.
And so.
After Hurricane I, monitoring those stations we've discussed. We tried to talk the city out of putting a telephone and each one of them has a telephone connection. That's how many of the stations you've got? That's a separate telephone bill for each lift station.
Yeah.
We want to tie it together with radio.
Yep. Yep.
That was discussed after Hurricane I.
That's, we'll brainstorm a little more on are there any other wish lists as part of this project?
I know there was one thing that Holten and Madre had spoken to last time, one thing was construction scheduling. Is that part of the construction management so that we're efficiently scheduling this project? Because we're going to have long lead times and get on some things and, and be able to operate the plant while we've got half of it being worked on?
The plant would be fully operational for the duration of the project. Except for a period of time where we were changing from one control panel to the other. We would do all the wiring in separate conduit.
But that would be part of your service, would be the scheduling of this, construction scheduling.
You know, clearly we don't want to do anything on July 2nd. We don't want to be doing any change over July 2nd.
It's not necessarily that we're going to do the schedule, but we're going to put a, I like, a performance based specification, okay? Cause we've got to make it work like this. And we're going to get with the contractor and have the contractor tell us how he's going to make it work like that.
Right.
He's going to develop.
He's going to develop the schedule.
Yes.
We're going to give him the parameters to work with him.
I'm just saying the parameters.
But yeah, but so we're, we're going to put a whole new control panel. Our proposal was to put a whole new control panel.
Yep.
Where, where the main control panel is now in that building, the, where the booster pumps are. In that, in that, in that building, put every, move everything over to one. And on the opposite wall of that, we'll put the new control panels in there and have everything wired up and stuff. And then just, just be a, a, just some transfer, transfer stuff.
My question is, have you guys looked at how this, how this waste water treatment plant should operate?
How it should operate?
Yeah, we have two sides, right?
Right.
I've heard one, I've heard one concept was it both sides would operate at one time. I heard another concept where one side would operate, okay? And when we switch over to the other to do maintenance on the other one.
The problem that you have in these little coastal towns is it's twenty percent full-time people and then huge weekends or heavy holidays. Your plant can go belly up while you get your population is down. Cause this is designed for three and a half people in every house. And when you've got two people in twenty-five percent of the house, you don't already have enough waste flowing into the plant to keep the boats alive.
Yeah.
So that's why you work on half a plant. And then it got to where you found that the half plant could operate pretty well on its own. So you put that the other little golf ball and then it deteriorated faster when it wasn't under the water. So it's subject to all the atmospheric stuff. So it's designed to work both of them parallel. But I like your idea. If you religiously, every ninety days, every six months. If you can operate both of them at the same time, you split the, split the flow half, half into each side.
So you, how do you?
Cause there's a splitter box.
One pipe coming in.
Nope, there's a splitter box.
And it has a pipe that a valve can be valved to either side.
There's a splitter box, it has a gate.
So how do you balance this?
There's a splitter box that has a gate that you can raise or lower the gate, that's part of it this way.
Yeah, so you can do, you can do both.
It can be split, and it doesn't have to be exactly.
As it's set up now, you can do both.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perforated and you can do both.
We just haven't.
We just haven't.
We have a big, there's one side's been down.
Yeah.
Hey, what happens? One side gets too much now, one side's overflowing.
But, but again, you've got gates, you've got a splitter box that is designed pretty well equally split the flow in between the two trains.
Is that true?
Yes. I won't say hundred and ten percent, but we're getting close to a hundred. Cause it's, that's way the plant is designed.
But what John's saying is important, it's, it's more ideal to operate one at a time.
Yes, it is.
As redundant system instead of operating.
You mean you go through the other one if you have to?
The biology of it.
But with religious swap overs.
You need, you need to swap it over.
Exactly.
A valve that isn't operated goes bad, equipment that's left.
Open to the atmosphere.
Open to the atmosphere, rust, a whole lot of fact. You'll see that if it's under the water, there's no corrosion on stuff and at the water level or above the water, it corrodes faster. If you're cleaning the plant that's operational every two or three days or at least once a week and washing stuff down, you don't do anything to the ones not operating.
That's right.
So you need to, you need to fudge it up.
Yep.
Part of the request or proposal will be some type of, of statement of how, how you see it operating.
Okay.
Well, this.
And cause the design could be based on that.
This request for proposal is for the electrical refurbishment. We're not, this request for proposal, we're, we're not yet talking about modifying the operation of the plant.
The electric code will be designed so that you can do that.
Yes. That's why I'm careful with the state.
So what did, have we thought about, you know, with the rehab work that we are going to do, the spring that we've already approved?
Yep.
Would it be in our best interest, do you think, to have them manage that? Just kind of as an overview, I mean, if they're managing this and they're overseeing this, I'm, I'm just saying. To keep track of that rather than using our resources to do that.
I, I think for the scope of work that we've already approved, I, Kendall.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Just kind of an oversight for what's going on with the work that's there.
Branch is fixing what's broken. On the downside, with the intent for it to be operational. So they are welding up the clarifier and getting it working. Is it optimized? No, we've agreed it's probably not optimized yet, but the first step is to get it working.
Okay.
So.
On the two weeks you mentioned, enough time, ask your attorney if she can get it reviewed in two weeks and get it back reviewed.
She stays up late apparently.
All right, what other questions do we have for land engineering?
There was a couple of questions about the proposal last week, I don't know who else was talking last week. About the service, the four hundred amp service, the breakdowns, there was a couple of questions. I think I still had those questions, our day was this, you know.
The electrical service that was provided out there right now is big enough for the whole plant. We're not changing, we're not increasing the electrical load and it's bigger, the generator is not. Generator is big enough for maybe half of it to get that. The, the electrical service, the electrical feed coming to you is big enough for the whole plant. I'll check with the commercial proposal.
This has to be relocated to the new location. So that's, that's what.
Thanks. I did have one question, I mean, since we went there, you know, right now we're at a fifty KW, we jumped all the way to a two hundred. I, I mean, that, are we certain that's where it needs to be? I mean, and.
When we get a design, if you talk about soft starters.
Right.
There's some things that we need to, for me to drop that down, but that increased the cost of the controls, save some money. You know, it's, it's an evaluation when we get a design, we'll do the, what we think is the best and most optimal design for you.
This price, well, the work would include updating the new electrical and also having a place when we get a new generator.
Yeah, it's included as well, an elevator platform to get the, the old generator will be taken out of that building. We'll build a new platform that's outside.
What, what this, what this scope doesn't include in this time, or the, or this high level estimate doesn't include this time? Is kind of refurbishment of that building.
Yes.
So does that include taking out the old generator? It does, I don't, we've not included that yet, you know, on.
Actually made a, made a additive order for something for the bid, decided to contract to take, get rid of it. Salvage it to the city for you to do it with until it's set out here for us.
But also we know that the place where the current generator is, is falling down, right?
Right.
And so we don't have refurbishment of that building included in this estimate.
Wouldn't be so easy to tuck it in.
It would, and so that's what we're talking about.
That's why I want to, to send a proposal including, send the additional things. So that we can tuck everything back in.
Yeah, so.
If, you know, if you can make a list of the possibilities of, that would add to that.
Adders on now.
And if we write our engineering contract for ninety-three thousand, if you do this, we want to add this much. If you would do this, we want to add this much to this one.
Our contract can be amended after, after the fact if we add something to it.
Right, yeah. Well, it, yeah, most of this would be adding that scope into the construction bid.
It's easy enough to do, no problem.
Okay.
So on the operation of those blowers, is there any, you know, feeling one way or the other about soft starter versus variable frequency drives? I know it's more expense, but is it, does it bring enough value to, to go that route or not?
Buggling, is it impacted by your policy?
Two things, a soft starter, if it's like a variable speed drive soft starter. We can go so far as to put a DO probe in your two-stick plant. If you've got four parts per million DO and you don't need four parts per million, then we can turn it down, save you some electricity.
Right.
Run it at less RPM. So if that's something that we want to consider, you know, yes.
We would take your recommendation.
You what?
We would take your recommendation.
Yeah, that was the direction I was going.
We'll make a recommendation on that, okay? And the soft starter, you know, cuts down on the inrush current starting, starting anything scratch, picks it up. Do you want a natural gas generator or a diesel powered generator? You got a natural gas out there?
I assume you're going to give us a spreadsheet on that, there's a few different types.
Yeah.
And recommend what we do.
We have it available, but the issue there is after a storm, we can have an issue where natural gas is not helping.
Okay, I understand that.
And so.
Most people, most people don't realize that, that your gas system go down, your generator.
Yes, yes, would natural gas be much easier for ninety percent of the issues when we're down?
Yeah.
Yes, but that ten percent will be a killer.
What, what you do is, you know, we can get fuel tanks and we can make a bigger diesel fuel tank.
Yep.
But you have a problem with that because the longer it stays there, it goes bad.
Yep.
So.
So I mean, this might, this is, this might be.
Plus and minus the total.
That'd be, that'd be a conversation we'll have when, when we're in the design.
That's right, and that, you know, the question is, we could put a gas one in and then, you know, storm planning, we, we haul in a, a diesel driven one. And just make sure we've got the plug-in capability for a portable, a portable generator.
Well, you can do it anyways.
You can do propane, put a big propane tank out there, just make sure you tie it down so it doesn't flow to one.
Yeah, so.
Especially if center point is.
Yeah, there's all those.
Lend us one, we need space for that too, and the ability to tie in worse systems.
Any other questions? We're taking those one of your time.
No, that, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank y'all. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is all we do.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is discussion and consideration of potential regulations on coin-operated machines and game rooms. Do I have a motion to discuss coin-operated machines and games?
Make a motion to discuss?
Go second. All right, thank you. Okay, as y'all know, this Jimmy's has put in three machines, counsel?
Uh, I think it's a little more than that. I'd have to count, I'd have to count the picture, but probably five or so, maybe.
Okay, and so we conferred with, with legal and legal said based on her, her understanding to prohibit them. We would, we would probably not win that if we attempted to do that.
Looks like five.
Five? Uh, is that correct? Did I say that correctly?
So as a general law city, we can only do what the state authorizes us to do, we're not a home rule city. And so the state has explicitly said what we are allowed to regulate about these eight liner machines. So that is exactly what is in that ordinance. One of the beauties of using Olson and Olson is that there's a lot of us. And so someone else took a long time to build another city to make this beautiful ordinance. And I said, give it to Jamaica Beach. And so you guys didn't have hours and hours of research put into that. So it follows the occupations code, it follows the penal code, it follows everything that authorizes us to regulate these types of machines, so.
And the fees attached therein are whether felt are reasonable for this?
Um, so, oh gosh, will you scroll down please? I think I left.
Two thousand?
Yep, so you guys can pick those, the highlighted ones, the occupation tax is statutory said.
Oh, okay.
But the highlighted ones, you guys kind of.
So is, is that the max we can charge them on occupation tax or we need to send that to the state once we collect it?
That's the, that's the max we can charge on it.
Okay.
For us. And that's still, that's currently set in state law.
Okay.
It's set at fifteen. So if that ever changes, we can increase or go whatever.
That's money that stays with.
Correct.
The city.
And then those, that thousand and hundred, I've probably told Kendall and Mayor this, but you know, we, we're not profiting off this kind of stuff. These are, these are funds that we need to, to enforce, to oversee.
Oversee the correct operation of the machines.
Exactly, so, so some kind of evaluation into what it takes for.
And, and if I read it, the application fee is one time, right? When an operator says, I want to open a game room, they pay the thousand dollars, we review it, we make sure they comply and we give them their permit.
I believe that's how it is.
And then that's a one-time thing. And then the hundred and, the hundred dollars per machine is an annual fee.
That, yes, that's how I.
We can't limit the number of machines?
Um, let's see.
This has rules in it about the spacing, I think it does say the max you can have is, was it fifty machines?
There's a space amount.
Per, based on. Location, and then there was something about the density of them and how it had to be. Now, one thing, this ordinance says we have to be three hundred feet from a residence or a church. And, and the church. I could straighten things back.
That was going to be my question. There's a Catholic church on one side and a Catholic church on the other side. I had a big, three hundred feet, six hundred yards.
And it says, and it says from a residence. And there's houses right behind them.
Now, these are for amusement only, right?
That's why it's been all.
I just see this as a dark side of politics.
Um, but, but I don't, I think based on that, if, if we pass this ordinance and if this is state law, I don't think you can have those things there. Because of location to a residence and location to a church.
But we have to get a ruling on that before we do it.
Well, we've got to get tape measure first.
We're guaranteed within three hundred feet of that church.
I understand this is based on some, Freeport is banned, is that not correct? So why can they do it and we can't?
They're a home rule city.
They're a home rule city, different charter.
That's something dark side of politics.
It's just.
See, cause I think this is just wrong.
Those are general law type.
We're, we're a general law city and we are not chartered to be home law and, and we're not big enough, we can't be home law.
Yeah, we're maybe five thousand.
Now, we can choose to be a different type and we can choose, but it has to go, it's not, we, we can't really. Well, we could.
See, that's where I'm at, it's just wrong. I mean, this is something should be repealed all the way up for the Supreme Court.
Right now, we're not going to argue state politics.
I'm not either.
Yeah, you are.
That's how I feel, it's just wrong.
But it's, that's not ours to solve today. Ours to solve today is, is this ordinance something we want to consider? We don't have it here to vote on today, it's for discussion on.
I think it has to be considered.
We have to from a regulatory standpoint, I think.
No, we, it's state law, they're, they're managed by state law, we don't have to pass anything. We can just say, chief is going to go in and do a periodic steam and put somebody at those machines and make sure they're compliant and not, not paying out cash equivalents, right? You know?
Hopefully it makes me sick.
Or we can, or we can, or we can say that we think we need to regulate it. And then because it is that proximity, we need absolute assurance that this is state law. And guidelines, and we'd be within our right to say, you can't do this because it's within this.
And I know it says, it says that in existence, as of the date this ordinance goes into effect, no coin operators shall be within three hundred feet of a church, blah, 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 blah.
Three hundred?
In, um, as of date this ordinance goes into effect, so before, if it's, if it, if it's already there before this ordinance, then we can't regulate it, isn't that correct?
We can still regulate them, they just may be able to be within the three hundred feet.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we couldn't, we couldn't ban them because they're already there.
Okay, or we can still have them come in and pay the license fee.
Okay, okay.
We're, we're, okay, Tom, then.
All right, so he's, he's grandfathered. So that's a, that would be a city requirement that the state allows us to do, but it's not a state requirement.
Correct.
Or a state limitation.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they can buy houses, but they can't buy churches.
So we can't impose that on them retroactively, is what you're saying? That, that particular rule?
Right, if there's, and perhaps those got there before the church or the residence, you know, who, I, I don't know. We, we know what we go by when we put the ordinance into effect. So yeah, we couldn't go kick them out.
Okay, cause they are within three hundred feet of the residence and the church. Uh, okay.
Well, we have to really, I'm not sure they are.
I, I, my.
Red, red light changers are sitting in that store.
My, my, my hundred yard meter says for sure there's residents.
A block of four hundred and fifty feet.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's within a block to a house and in a block to that church.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they buy houses.
Anyway, um.
Let's get some.
Okay, so the, the question counsel is, is this something, um, you know, that we'd like to tweak a little more, enforce? Is it something we feel strongly about? I mean, from a, you know, we're going to have to come up with an application, we're going to have to, to, you know.
I strongly think we, we should, we should draft this ordinance in, in your board, but banning?
Yes, that's true.
Can, can we raise this amount or is this number?
I think, yeah, well, she said we could change.
Yeah, but it also, it also has to be reasonable for the, the actual cost to the city, right? I mean, it. Yeah, I think we can raise it, but, but how much is reasonable?
Yeah. Kendall, you have a feel for impact to the city as far as.
It has the reason always comes.
Having to keep track of this, is it low impact, no impact?
This is the only, only place that can even have these within the city, right? I guess it's not good, whatever, so this would be a, I feel like if we pass this, it's a one-time thing.
Well, let's, let's talk about the restaurant going in, what if you decided to make the whole bottom floor a gaming room?
There you go.
Right? I mean, he could, right? He could elevate it because it's in flood zone and then he could, you know, he could decide to let them rest away. We don't have anything that says he can't.
True.
And of course, over there, I, I mean, I'm just looking at other potential commercial locations or applications, right? We've got an empty bistro that's not being used right now.
Yes.
You know, we've got a couple of other businesses, you know, what if the gym, what if the gym folds and he decides, oh, I could put a gaming room in here?
We have to revise that.
Yeah.
I'm telling you.
So, you know, is this something, yeah, I agree, right, right now it doesn't seem like there's many other locations where they could put them, but.
You make good points, yeah.
Kind of impact.
As it stands for this right now, one, it's probably low impact.
Okay.
That could bring others in though.
Um, Bridget, would we be allowed, our zoning ordinance has some things we'd like to tweak in it. There's a couple of contradictions in it and a couple of things that need further clarity. So it is on the scope of our outlook to bring that up for review sometime next year, then we catch our breath. In our zoning ordinance, if, if the council chose to say, these aren't allowed in this zone.
Yep, you can do that.
We can do that?
Yes.
That's right.
Is that, is, is that the place to do it then, rather than, than putting in ordinance to do these five machines?
So your zoning ordinance is only going to be on the use of it? You're not going to put into your zoning ordinance the regulations on these machines? It would simply be the authority for those to be there, for those to be on those properties.
But can I ban them through the zoning ordinance? If I say these, but I can't make it go retroactive to this guy's because he's already said it. But moving forward, if I said in any of our commercially zoned areas, we are not allowing gambling, gaming of, of any type?
What you would do is you put it in the one you're going to let it be in. If, if you want it, if you have A, B, C, and D zones and you only want to allow it in A, you list that as a permitted use in A.
Okay, yeah.
You don't even refer to that class.
Okay, but if I didn't have it as a permitted use either, if I just wanted to say, no, because it's not going to be in a house, it's not going to be.
We, so really what the, because we're a general law city.
What the state, I can't ban them.
We can't ban them.
Okay, so we can't do it in zone?
Even in zone.
I thought you meant, can I limit them with zoning? You could say, oh, you're only allowed in this zone, but you cannot outright ban them.
I can't say they're not allowed in any zone?
Correct.
Okay, great, all right.
Texas law touches it, they talked about it. Even home rule cities are going to start having trouble with this because they, the legislature just did a big preemption bill. They said if Texas law dabbles in it, you guys can't even touch it. Now, that hasn't played out yet, um, but if Texas law dabbles in it, we got to be careful. And as a general law city?
Definitely not.
Surely not, right?
Okay, so the only mechanism to put any controls on it, because we can't prohibit it.
Correct.
Even through zoning, is doing it. Okay.
We significantly limit them by saying you're only allowed in this zone.
What if we have two zones, commercial A and commercial B, they're only allowed in commercial B? Don't we have established any, anything for commercial B yet? But when it happens, you can put as many games there as you want.
Well, we can make, we can, we can make Jimmy's the only commercial B location that exists. Well, Jimmy would be able to, if he decided to, he could turn his whole thing into just gaming machines, right?
Well, do, is that authorized in that zone, a gaming room?
We, we don't, we don't, it's not stated at all.
Oh, okay.
Right?
This seems like the machine's course of action.
Well, even if we do it now, we as well let this, you know, we can always go back to the three, evaluate the zoning side of it, right?
Oh, as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's step two.
This is kind of a stopgap measure, right? Just to put it in place to.
Well, we don't, we don't have it on here to approve, right? So we can't, we can't vote on this tonight.
And we know we can't ban them.
Uh, and we know we can't ban them.
That's a, that answers our.
Good, um, Garrett, Chief Garabee, have you read through this ordinance?
Some of them, ma'am.
And have you seen that you could enforce it if there, if you do find that there's, they're giving away cash?
It's not that easy. I've dealt with this for many years, it's not that, they just had a big bust, uh. It's not that, they just had a big bust, uh, two months ago, and Hitchcock has several game rooms. Um, I guess they're doing this, and it wasn't even Hitchcock PD that made the bust, and it wasn't even Galveston County, it was Harris County, uh, officials that came down and busted one game room there on Highway Six. It was actually on the news the next day, where they busted like fourteen within Harris County, Galveston County, Rorsoria County. It's, it's not that simple. You actually have to have an undercover witness that wants to go in and you give them twenty bucks, boom, they get paid, they come back out and wait for you outside. It, it's a difficult operation to catch, it really is.
Also, when I read the three hundred feet from the school or whatever, it does say the part about game rooms in existence that says, upon that, in which case, full compliance within this subsection shall be required upon expiration of three years or upon abandonment of this location. So it seems like from the time we pass it, he would have a three-year grace period to be at this, and then he would have to, then he would be grounded by this.
Yeah, I think that's how that reads.
Okay. Um, okay, well, I have read this, I have not read this, right? I kind of scanned the high level, um, so I, I think the path forward here is for counsel to go do a detailed review of this ordinance.
Yes.
Please send any comments, concerns, um, to Kendall, and, and we will have a draft one, um, in the agenda packet.
Okay.
Is that a reasonable timeframe if we have three tweaks to it, Bridget? Okay. Um, all right, then I would ask all of you to please provide input to Kendall in the next few days, because then Ms. Begley will need to modify it. And, uh, we have another meeting on the twenty-first, and we'll have to have it in the agenda packet on the eighteen.
Right.
Okay.
Seems like a good one.
I still like to see. All right, thank you, I'm sorry we kept delaying.
But you're important to the foreword.
But I'm very comfortable.
Thank you.
And please make your all, please drive safe.
I will, take care.
Thank you. Okay, next is my report, and I think it was alluded to, they are working on the bulkhead. Um, also, I'd like to thank Kendall for being proactive last weekend on reaching out and halting our boring operation on Friday. And, uh, I, I, I think they've worked some good solutions and not promising that we won't have a few more water leaks as AT&T is, is putting new fiber optic in the city, but I think they made some step changes that will at least keep us from having a break every other day. Um, so I'd like to thank you for that. And then also, I'd like to reiterate what Ms. Jones said, uh, it is Veterans Day next week, and we, um, you know, I'd like to take a moment to thank all of our vets and, uh, thank them for their service. And that's all I have. So, at this point, um, do I have a motion to move to executive session?
To adjourn?
To adjourn to?
Recess.
To recess, I never say the word right, to recess to executive session.
I'll make that motion to recess to executive session.
Do you have a second?
Off.
All right.